Is that better?
Yep.
Now I can see. Couldn't see.
So I'll have, so we're, we're live now, just so you know, and I have a slide with the flag for the pledge when we get to that part.
We don't stand right.
Uh, you could, but you'll end up out of this shot. So maybe just put your hand over your heart.
It's legal to sit?
I don't know. Stand up and let's see if you're in the shot.
Yeah.
You don't want to do that.
Beautiful shot.
It'll change the rating of the meeting.
Yes. And I have to look straight ahead because when I look up, Ken's got the, got it on the TV too. And when I look up. And I look stupid.
I have a second screen of it too. So Dr. Graves, we won't see you until you turn your camera on. I have it set so that, okay, I have it set so there's no placeholder for people who aren't, who don't have their video on. That way viewers will just see the board and not the rest of us.
My clock says 5:57. Am I correct?
Yes, you are.
So who are we missing? So I'll know.
Uh, we have, uh, you, Dr. Graves, Dr. Thurman, Dr. Davis. And so we're missing everyone else. Uh, it looks like. Uh, I think everyone who is presenting is in. Dr. Jidali, are you in as one of the Ferg floor users?
I believe so, sir.
Okay, great. Dr. Powell Walker. So Ms. Ponder is not in this evening. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Uh, so it's 5:59. Uh, it looks like, uh, everyone is in. So. At six o'clock, I think you're good to go.
Okay, thank you. And at six o'clock. I'd like to call to the, the meeting to order. And due to concerns for public health and safety, the Board of Ferguson Florissant School District will use Zoom, a video conferencing tool in lieu of face-to-face meeting. The meeting will be broadcast live on the district's YouTube channel. And we have the website. At this time, could we please have the pledge to the flag? I'm waiting.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, I want to begin tonight, um, with a moment of silence for Dr. Uh, Robert Fritz. He was one of our school superintendents and he passed away last Sunday. So if we could please just take a moment to remember Dr. Fritz. Okay, thank you. It is with a saddened heart that I announce the passing of Dr. Robert Fritz. Dr. Fritz was a man of few words, but with a heart as big as the ocean. He came to the Ferguson Florissant School District in 1967 as a counselor at McClure High School. At the time, McClure was a fairly new school and was the only high school in the district. Bob's calm demeanor, wisdom, and love for people earned him notice by the central office. And after three years, he was promoted to central office where he worked in many capacities. He served as a deputy superintendent, assistant superintendent, assistant to the superintendent. And in 1991, he was appointed superintendent of the Ferguson Florissant School District. During his tenure at central office, he made dreams become reality. Because he listened and then acted. He was asked to help negotiate the merger and many other district-wide activities. He moved quietly behind the scenes to help find the solution to what problems might arise. Never did Bob like to be in the limelight or noticed. He was well represented by the, he was well-respected by the FFNEA and all the employees because he was loyal to staff and always put them first. He truly believed in Ferguson Florissant as a family. And the fact that you should treat everyone with respect and move your best employees up through the ranks. Tragedy hit the school district in 1995, which devastated Bob. He never fully recovered from the murder of at McClure North. His heart of a counselor and his love for his Ferguson Florissant's family would not let him put his, this horrible incident out of his mind. In the fall of 1995, Dr. Fritz announced his retirement. In June of 96, he left his longtime love and family and moved on to his new adventure. He and his wife, Mary, moved to their farm in Herman, where he lived happily ever after. He regained health, strength, and the ability to finally enjoy what he liked to do. Bob will never be forgotten for his passion, compassion, loyalty, and dedication and love for his Ferguson Florissant family. Bob was my first superintendent of schools, and I couldn't have been taught by a better role model and mentor. He taught me a lot about finance, school law, and school business. Because he was very frugal and ran a tight financial ship, he believes strongly in the district funds being used as on students, staff, and facilities. He wasn't much for the staff or the Board of Education or himself traveling. And emphasized using district funds very wisely. Dr. Fritz, you will be forever missed, respected, and loved by many. Thank you. So at this time, under the provisions of the Public Meetings Law of the State of Missouri, the Board must adopt the roll call uh, by roll call vote, an agenda that includes the time, date, place, and tentative agenda for the meeting. A copy of the notice and agenda for this meeting was posted on Monday, May 11th, 2020, at the Administration Center, 8855 Dunn Road, Hazelwood, Missouri. At the same time, copies of the notice and agenda were sent to major radio and television state stations, to three newspapers, to all municipalities, schools in the district, and posted on the district website. Could I have a recommendation, please, to adopt the agenda as posted?
I'll move.
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Graves and seconded by Mr. Chabot. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Ebert.
Aye.
Mr. Chabot.
Aye.
Dr. Powell Walker.
Aye, sorry.
Dr. Thurman.
Aye.
Dr. Graves.
Aye.
Mrs. Hoxton.
Aye.
Each month, the communication team presents a short video of district highlights and successes. So at this time, could we please show those?
A hill major in forensic science while participating on. As students, teachers, and staff across the Ferguson Bosser School District adapt to the new norm due to the effects of COVID-19, success continues to thrive, even in these unprecedented times. Earlier in the semester, staff and students of Griffith Intermediate School gathered for what they thought was a typical auditorium program. Most believe something exciting was about to happen. Superintendent Dr. Joseph Davis and other district-level administrators were also there to participate. Moments later, during the assembly, Dr. Davis announced that fourth-grade teacher, Robin Drew, is Ferguson Florissant's 2020 Teacher of the Year. The room erupted in cheer. Congratulations to Ms. Drew and for all you do for the students at Griffith Intermediate School. Cadet First Sergeant Devin S. Talent, a senior in McClure's JROTC Combat Battalion, was selected by the U.S. Army Cadet Command for a national-level, three-year Advanced Designee Army ROTC Scholarship. This scholarship, valued at $124,800, was determined through a national process and awarded based on the review of this scholarship application using the whole-person concept. Cadet Talent chose to attend Maryville University, where a hill major in forensic science while participating on the swim team and attending Washington University's Army ROTC Gateway Battalion. The district's food distribution efforts are well underway. Currently, the district has been providing meals at three locations. The Savoy Center, the Ferguson Empowerment Center, and Trinity Church. The district recently moved to provide one full week's worth of meals once a week. The Savoy and the Empowerment Center serves meals on Wednesdays, and Trinity Church serves boxes of meals on Thursdays. The food service staff, under the direction of Priscilla Irving, have been packaging meals into boxes at the STEAM Academy and McClure South Berkeley High School. About 1,000 boxes are distributed each week, which equates to about 5,000 meals per week. This could not be possible without the amazing owners and their volunteers. A huge kudos to SFP, the Food Service Staff, and Admin, and all the district's partners to keep students fed during this time. May 4th through the 8th was Teacher Appreciation Week. And the Ferguson Bosser School District celebrated by recognizing the hard work and dedication of teachers in the district, especially during this time. Principal Sean Joyce and Assistant Principal Canelo Williams surprised each and every staff member at Robinwood during this week by visiting them, placing a sign in their yards, and presenting them with a bag of goodies. Griffith Intermediate students are quickly learning financial awareness and environmental systems thanks to a $79,000 grant from the Innovative Technology Education Fund, or the ITEF. This grant provides students with an opportunity to be hands-on with 21st century technology-based learning opportunities while also providing a meaningful opportunity to do something great for their community in a collaborative environment. As part of the grant, students have begun project implementation by creating a financial awareness campaign, weekly money management plans, and the Business Entrepreneurial Impact Study. ITEF provides competitive grants to allow schools in the region to create innovative learning opportunities through technology.
Thank you very much. That was very enjoyable and interesting. Um, at this time, we have the MSBA update.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Board's Association's Board Report for the month of May. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during two minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the digital divide facing many of our students and families in Missouri. Many school districts have turned to virtual learning to deliver education due to the coronavirus pandemic. But a survey by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education shows as many as 20% of our students do not have sufficient internet access to participate in virtual instruction. Commissioner of Education Margie Van Deven tells MSBA that digital divide has been apparent for some time, but is now a bigger challenge than ever.
Obviously, when we're doing remote learning, uh, there are many, many tools that we can use through the use of the computer as we're doing today, having this, this, um, face-to-face discussion. And that doesn't happen for some of our students who don't have that access. So I think that's one of the areas that we're finding the biggest challenge right now.
Van Deven says there needs to be a statewide effort to solve the lack of internet access for many students and families. She adds, while school buildings have been closed, education has continued for students. As school districts have found creative ways to teach students, even when virtual instruction has not been an option. While school buildings in the state have remained closed for the school year, the work of school boards, administrators, teachers, and parents goes on. As school districts continue to find ways to provide education for students at home. The work of school boards and superintendents is especially important during the coronavirus pandemic as they deal with decisions they never thought they would face. MSBA's Associate Executive Director for Leadership Development, Phyllis Parks, says effective governance practices are as important as ever during this time, including the focus on school district role.
And it's those, um, the foundation of what the, um, community expects from their school district and what the board and the community and the superintendent and all the stakeholders have really come together to say, this is where, what we want to accomplish. This is what we want to achieve. And that should always be in the forefront, no matter what the circumstances are.
MSBA has posted a document on the role of the school board in responding to the coronavirus on the MSBA website, along with numerous other resources developed by MSBA staff and from other sources. Those resources are constantly being updated, so please check them off. In times of crisis and economic insecurity, rates of child abuse and neglect increase. Unfortunately, that has been true during this time of social isolation. Reports to Missouri's Child Abuse and Neglect Hotline have declined by as much as 50% during the spread of the coronavirus pandemic. When children stay at home, they are isolated from places where adults often look out for their safety and well-being, including schools, childcare facilities, places of worship, and other public areas. Jessica Seitz is the Director of Public Policy for Missouri Kids First, a child advocacy and protection organization. She says her group is urging school professionals who are mandated reporters to continue to look for signs of child abuse, even as they are teaching virtually. But during this time, other sets of eyes are needed as well.
We decided that we'd come up with materials and try to disseminate them to essential workers who are still seeing, um, paying families, so delivery, um, delivery workers, groceries, pharmacies, those places that we are continuing to go. Um, and be the only place that are open in our communities. So, you know, if you think, who have you seen today? If it's only, uh, the mail, mailman, delivery, so we realized we really had to get communications out there. Um, to get, to try to get calls back up.
You can find more information on the Essential for Kids campaign on the Missouri Kids First website. Due to the coronavirus pandemic and the social distancing restrictions that have been in place, MSBA has canceled the in-person version of our Igniting Great Ideas Conference, originally scheduled for mid-June in Springfield. Instead, we'll be holding a virtual conference. Details about that virtual event will be posted soon on the MSBA website. And we'll also be holding our June Delegate Assembly virtually next month. And delegates will be electing statewide officers for the coming year. We'll be providing more details on that event soon, and we urge your school board to be representative at that delegate assembly. You can watch video interviews with the candidates for state office hosted on the MSBA website. Plans continue for the 2020 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association for School Administrators to be held September 24th through 27th in Kansas City. We're pleased to announce one of our general session speakers will be former Kansas City Chiefs tight end and current football analyst for Fox Sports, Tony Gonzalez. The event will once again feature more than 100 sessions and workshops, many presented by school leaders from districts throughout the state, all in a new location at the Kansas City Convention Center. Registration for the 2020 Annual Conference opens on the MSBA website on June 1st. School board elections in Missouri were moved from April 7th to June 2nd this year due to the coronavirus outbreak. But if you did not have a contested election and were sworn in as a new school board member in April, don't forget, Missouri law requires that new board members complete 18 and a half hours of training in their first year of service. During the coronavirus restrictions, MSBA's free certified board member essential training will be delivered all online. After the restrictions are lifted, a portion of the training will be delivered online with the remainder in a one-day classroom setting at locations around the state. You can register for MSBA's CDM Essential Training to help you become an effective board member of your governance team through the MSBA website. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
Thank you. Agenda item number five, public comments. The Board allocates this portion of the meeting to allow stakeholders the opportunity to comment on both agenda items and non-agenda items. Due to the meeting being held via Zoom and live stream on the district's YouTube. The Board President will read aloud any comments that have previously been submitted. In keeping with the district policies 4054 and 4059 and personnel law, any person submitting a comment should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. While the Board will not directly respond to speakers during the public comment, uh, period, the Board President may make clarifying remarks at the end of the comment session to correct any mistreatment of facts. So we will start, we, um, have seven comments and, uh, we put them in the order that they were received, uh, in the district office. The first one is from Connie Harge. Hello, my name is Connie Harge, a candidate for the Ferguson Florissant School Board for the June 2nd election. I was a former school board member and secretary who made an impact on our children's lives. I have lived in the Ferguson Florissant School District for 40 years. My spouse, Bill, graduated from Berkeley High School. My children and grandchildren went to schools in the district. I still have a grandchild going to college in our district. I have an advanced and master certification with MSBA. I served as a delegate with MSBA for three years, also served on the Special School District Committee. I helped open the STEAM Academy. I have been engaged in school activities and have been visited, uh, schools, talking with the students and teachers. I am involved in the community as a director with the Ferguson Florissant School FYI and on the Ferguson, and on the Florissant, I'm sorry, Youth Advisory Board. While on the board, my strategic plan was stakeholders and communication. I worked well and was an asset with the Board and Dr. Davis, the superintendent, by helping putting better safety measures in place in our schools, which is my number one priority. While working on the board, we also improved the district's achievements, attendance, and accountability. I have proven to be a caring, dedicated, and trustworthy for our children. I am committed to our children, parents, and teachers, and the community. I believe everyone in our community has a voice. I am endorsed by the FFNEA, North County Labor Club, Mayor Tim Lowry, City of Florissant, Mayor Reggie Jones of Delwood, and many others. I am number two on the ballot. I appreciate your support and votes. Thank you and be safe. Heaven John, number two. Many of us at Berkeley had questions that I wanted to collect and forward them on as a staff member. We have been and shared the suggestions made by this Missouri State Board of Education, and many of them raise important questions. Do we have any idea what the fall, uh, could look like in a large school like Berkeley with social distancing requirements? Are special classes and teachers going to be eliminated or made part-time? Are special classes and teachers going to be eliminated or made part-time? Do we have plans if we are required, advised, to go virtual for the fall? Monetarily, some of the plans seem impossible, transportation alone, with a large amount of students and social distancing requirements. Are we worried about a significantly reduced budget for the 2021 school year? Do we have a plan for Chromebook and library book retrieval? Uh, what assumptions are we working under in regards to staffing for next year? Is there any hint that we will be 100% virtual like we are hearing? Will the change, our staffing, will, uh, contracts be reworked? Is there any way we would change our calendar start date? In the St. Louis Post-Dispatch, they talked about Missouri allowing schools to petition to start earlier than August 24th. When will we be allowed back in to obtain personal items from buildings? Dr. Davis, uh, will give an update this evening that will address these concerns and questions, and then he will get back with, uh, staff or anyone in here that asks specific questions. Dr. Paulit Thurman is number, uh, three. My husband, Bob, and I have lived in the community for thirty-two years. I am a retired educator of thirty-one years, fifteen which were served in our district as a principal. I've served as a classroom teacher, counselor, special education teacher, and as an early childhood district administrator. Uh, integrating and confidential, confidentially are qualities that I hold in high esteem. Presently, I serve on the Emerson YMCA Board in Ferguson, the Deaconess and Youth Academy Boards at New Sunny Mount Baptist Church. I also served on the Board of Christian Education. I am a member of Alpha Alpha Sorority Incorporated. I've received professional development through the Missouri School Board Association, achieving distinguished level and highest certification possible for board members. My reelection to the board will help to maintain its equilibrium as we make our annual transitions. The essence of my why has been the advocacy for and love of all children. Equality education helps to generate productive citizens. Strong schools are the foundation of strong communities. My six years on the board have been dedicated to building on this foundation. Out of concern for our children and parents, I voted against restructuring due to the resulting separation of family ties to their home schools. The plan separates siblings and it, uh, presents issues for parents who have children in multiple schools. Our children will attend five different schools before graduating. The more transitions, uh, students experience as they, uh, articulate can negatively impact their academic success and the formation of relationships with their teachers and peers, especially for students who struggle academically and socially. Though the board voted to implement the restructuring plan, I'm working earnestly to ensure its success. I respect my fellow board members' right to vote their consensus. I possess the experience and professional leadership needed to faithfully carry out the responsibilities of the board. I am committed to serving the needs of all stakeholders. I'm endorsed by many of my former parents, students, and teachers in the Ferguson Florissant Education Association, North County Labor Club, Florissant Mayor Tim Lowry, Delwood Mayor Reggie Jones, and a variety of other community leaders. A few accomplishments I've been involved in while serving on the board include implementation of early childhood programs in primary schools, increasing our graduate rate, opening the STEAM middle and high schools and the Innovative High School, the implementation of the IB program and the addition of more AP classes, college and university partnerships, teacher salary increases, the addition of more counselors and social workers and SROs, test scores improved and were in the distinguished range for the 2018-2019 school year, the increase in financial reserves, the implementation of our equity resolution, trauma-informed schools, and restorative justice practices, the implement, implementation of food and computer distributions during the pandemic, served as president, vice president, secretary, and assistant secretary, the passing of Prop 1, I'm sorry, a fifty cent, uh, tax increase. Thank you. Number four is Lori Salomon, FFA NEA President. Good evening, board and administration. The FFNEA would like to recognize that the large number of factors for consideration creates difficulty in constructing plans for moving forward. But with that being said, we look forward to receiving timely information around the following. The plan for returning twelve-month employees into the district physical workspaces that recognizes any employees with underlying health concerns. The plan for allowing ten-month, ten-month employees into the district physical spaces that requires the last paid workday being May 28th, particularly for those who are retiring, leaving the district, and those who are being assigned a new classroom slash office space. I have reviewed the Missouri School Boards Association Center for, uh, Education, Pandemic Recovery Considerations for Schools on How to Operate While Navigating a Pandemic. Is the district looking at following all of these recommendations? Will they develop their own plan? Will you force families to get tested or vaccinated against COVID-19 before they return to school? I personally will look for alternative options if my kids are forced to wear... Oh, I'm sorry. I, that is no longer Lori's, it is Kim Chestnut. And I'm going to go back and start over because I didn't go read her portion, portion and her name. Kim Chestnut. I have reviewed the Missouri School Board Association Center for Education, the Pandemic Recovery Considerations for Schools on How to Operate While Navigating a Pandemic. Is the district looking at following all of these recommendations? Will they develop their own plan? Will you force families to get tested or vaccinated against COVID-19 before they return to school? I will personally look for alternative options if my kids are forced to wear masks to school, if a vaccine is mandated, or if their recess is limited. Some of the guidelines are very concerning to me. I see that Webster Groves is starting out the year with e-learning. I think it would be nice if parents had the option to either send their kids or teach from home, or maybe send them part-time and learn from home the other time. This wouldn't work for all families, but would for some and could cut down on the amount of kids at school at one time. When will the district be deciding what school will look like next year? I know things are ever-changing and no one can really, no one really knows what the future brings, but I really would like to know the school district's plan is, or at least when the plan will be released. Thank you for all that you have done for our students and families during the pandemic. We really do appreciate it. Comment number six, Carolyn Randazzo. Thank you to the school board and administration for finding a way to hold graduation for the class of 2020. I am glad that the milestone in our students' lives will be honored despite the pandemic that impacts all of us. Our district has a history of adapting graduation to fit the times and needs of the community, moving from the high school gyms, auditoriums, to keel auditorium, to the M1 circle, to the football fields, to UMSL, to the family arena, and now to the Mills Powerplex. We need a way to make it happen for our students. Looking forward, we must use that spirit as planning for the 2020 slash 2021 school year continues. Two issues are the most important, in my opinion. Internet access must be available for all students. All resources available must address internet access. It seems highly likely to me that on the online teaching and learning, to some extent, will continue in the next school year. All of our students must have access to the internet to continue to make progress. It's the only equitable thing to do. The second issue is parent input. Parents must truly be partners in planning for the next school year. Uh, parents' lives are in as much upheaval as our students' lives and probably more. Parents must be on board for any plans to work for our students. Hold listening sessions for parents to share their needs and ideas. Share the needs and ideas that the administration and board have. Don't go into the sessions with plans all made, ready to present. I feel the success of the 2020 slash 2021 school year is dependent on collaboration and compromise between our parents, administration, and the school board. Be safe and be well. Thank you. Number seven, Tiffany Bush. Hello, everyone, board members, superintendent, and listening audience. My name is Bush. If you would please me a moment to thank Mrs. Hogshead for introduction on my behalf. Was hoping that I would have the opportunity to do this in person, but due to the current climate we're in with COVID-19, I, along with everyone else, has had two adjustments. I'm running as a candidate for the Ferguson Florissant School Board Division. I'm a mother of a McClure High School sophomore and a, and a recent McClure graduate who is currently on an A-plus scholarship attending Florissant Valley Community College. My children and I moved to Ferguson in 2006. I love my community and am passionate about doing my part to make my community a better place for all. I am a member of the Ferguson Civilian Review Board, where I serve as the Board Secretary. My children and I are members of the Spirit Church, where I also serve as administrative assistant to the Director of Creative Arts. My professional background is in customer service and administration. I work for St. Louis Community College Forest Park as an administrative assistant to the Vice President of Student Affairs. I wanted to share a little bit about myself for those of you who aren't familiar with me. I'm looking forward to opportunity of serving on the school board, fingers crossed, and working alongside the sitting board members to improve our district for everyone involved. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your comments, and I hope you felt comfortable with, uh, my reading what you wanted. At this time, the Board of Education will receive an update from Dr. Davis, the Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you, President Hogshead. Um, so it's hard to believe we're another month into school closure. Um, I want to thank all of you, our staff, our students, and families for your efforts to continue learning, even in the midst of this difficult time. Our communications team is continually adding information regarding the district's response to the virus on our website. You can go there at furgfloor.org/united. Please be sure to check often. There are many food resources, as well as resources for self-care and other supports. On graduation, I'm really excited that our students will get an opportunity to experience their graduation at the end of this month. We're working out the details with Big Sports Properties for graduation at the former St. Louis Mills Mall. We've had to make adjustments, uh, one adjustment in particular to allow families to leave the first graduation and prevent delays for graduates and families for the second graduation. Uh, here's the change, McClure will be graduating at 11:00 a.m. on May 31st, that's the same, and we needed additional time between their graduation and McClure North. And so McClure North's graduation will be at 4:00 p.m., um, on the 31st. Again, McClure's graduation will be at 11:00 a.m. on May 31st, and McClure North's graduation will be at 4:00 p.m. on May 31st. Details on cap and gown pickup and other senior information will be coming soon. Uh, you have likely seen the Class of 2020 signs appearing in seniors' yards this week, and the last file was submitted today. So our seniors will be recognized also on DDI's media billboards later this month. We're grateful to DDI for providing the billboards at no cost to the district. And I know our seniors are excited about their signs in the yards, as well as, uh, being honored on the billboards. Uh, on food distribution, uh, the district has made adjustments to our food, food distribution plan based on several factors. Furg Floor is distributing food through three venues one day per week and providing meals for five days each week. We're hoping to expand the number of distribution points with a modified mobile distribution beginning in June. As I've shared, a list of food, pantries, and other information regarding food distribution is on our website at furgfloor.org/united. The Student Services Department has implemented several outreach events to support mental health wellness. Some of the opportunities currently are in place are as follows. Uh, we have a daily dose of care. Cabinet members and other staff members create a brief intro selfie video and a link to something that benefits physical or mental wellness. Uh, Care and Connect Wellness Hour, this event is held every Friday from 9:00 to 10:00 and is hosted by the district's social work team. Staff can connect via Zoom for some mindful self-care. Mindful Minute is an email sent out every Wednesday to staff to remind them to take a minute to engage in some mindfulness exercises and provide some relaxation techniques. Plug into Parenting is a weekly event on Wednesdays from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. for our parents. It is hosted and vetted partners to provide mental health and coping strategies for parents during this pandemic. Our school counselors are continuing to connect with students via Google Classroom. They're also contacting parents who are searching self-harm, uh, student, uh, the parents of students who are searching self-harm topics on the internet. And so we're keeping a close eye on that and those students who may be using the internet in questionable manners. So please, parents, if you would, pay close attention to students as they are doing their academic work. And when we get red flags, we will be contacting parents. Additionally, social workers are continuing to monitor pop-up food distribution sites and providing communication for that. Our counselors are monitoring student alerts regarding questionable internet searches as well. Um, our admissions office is assisting parents with contact updates. They are also making preparations for total online registration for the coming school year. A partnership with BHR, which stands for Behavioral Health Response, is being negotiated to support the district on its trauma-informed journey for the coming school year. I know there's some questions about teachers getting into buildings. We've had several inquiries from staff and families regarding access to the buildings. Our team has been developing a plan for retrieval of personal items from the buildings. We will share that plan very soon, so please stay tuned to your emails and your voicemails because we'll be sharing that real soon. Uh, however, safety will always be our first priority through all of this. And keeping the safety of our staff and our students at the forefront as we prepare to have staff come into the buildings to retrieve those items. Uh, on retirement, this Friday would have been our annual retirement dinner. Uh, we're so grateful for the many years of service of our retirees, uh, that they provided to our district. Our communications team is preparing the video that would have been presented at that dinner, and we will share that with our staff in the coming days. Let me say again, I'm so proud of the way all of our staff have come together, even though we are physically separated. We're definitely stronger together. Let's continue to do our parts by observing recommendations by the Health Department and elected officials to keep our students, uh, and our families, and our staff safe. I also want to say that we're developing our reentry plan for 2020, and we will provide that update in the coming weeks, uh, with opportunities for our community to have input. Uh, remember that we are Furg Floor United. Thank you, Madam President, and that is my report.
Thank you, sir.
I have questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to go back and talk, ask a few questions about the graduation. I just have a few suggestions, and hopefully, maybe these are being considered. Um, number one, I know that there are students who are not going to participate. Are we going to do something for those who choose not to? And my suggestion, or it has been suggested that those students at least have their pictures shown and their names posted, um, maybe at the end of the graduation or somewhere through the graduation. Is that a possibility?
Yes, so, um, yes, we, we met actually with the Big Sports Production Team a couple of times, even, uh, since we've had our last meeting. And so we're considering those options. Uh, they are pretty flexible. Uh, I think Dr. Power Walker brought up a similar, uh, question last board meeting when we, when we had the special meeting. Um, and we think that that'll, that'll be a really viable option. We, we pursued that, uh, because there are some parents who won't send their students. Uh, one of the nice things about- One of the nice things about what they have available to us is the technology. And so when students are crossing the stage, their names will be scanned through a barcode. And so we can upload any files, so that's quite possible. I can't give you a definite yes right now because we're still working through a lot of details. But we absolutely have considered that when we heard that question last time for parents who students are not there, that when their name comes up in the alphabetical order list of those who are crossing the stage, is there an opportunity to at least show their pictures so that it can be recognized as well? So I can't say that we absolutely pursued that question, and hopefully I'll be able to give you an answer sooner than later in terms of its possibilities.
Okay, the other questions I have are about safety issues that we talked about last time. And I still wanted, I want to ask, are you still going to do the food trucks? Because I guess my concern about that was, again, more contact and also thinking about what people do with their food containers once they're done. Are they going to pitch them out the window? And we have another issue about cleaning up after, after the graduations. I just have a real concern about that in the first place, just serving the food. Because again, one of my other concerns is like the cleaning stations and the porta-potties. So are you, is that a consideration about not doing food? Or have you all talked about that at all? Or because we don't serve food at graduation, so on regular graduation, so is that an issue? And I mean, something.
I just want to state that we do, they do serve food at the, they have concession stands at family center because I've seen them walking around with it. So I just want to throw that out.
Okay, okay, I just, I don't, I don't remember that, but that's fine.
Yeah.
This is a little different.
Yeah, I can address some of that, Dr. Thurman. So we have, you know, been meeting with them probably daily, Larry and Rashawn and Adrian, and as well as Lisa have been with us through the agreement that we're getting all those particulars in place. The food is certainly a definite option for us. We can choose not to. However, we know we'll have parents there an hour, hour and a half before the ceremony begins. So we're working through those details. The way the food option works is that they will, like at a football or baseball game, where they'll have folks going through with carts in the parking lot to be able to get, you know, prepackaged items they can purchase and drinks, hot dogs, those kinds of things that already be sort of prepackaged. So that option is absolutely there because you'll have a lot of people there, the piece that would, you know, and there's also, you know, provisions made for the cleanup certainly after the ceremony itself. So all those pieces have been talked through. We're working through the details. I actually had the contract in front of me trying to work through some of that with our attorney. And so the piece that, you know, we'll make sure we are really on, we've looked at safety and security. I think you asked that question last time as well as insurance, and in fact, Laura and Lisa are here too. So if there's some specific details that they can share, certainly I'll yield to them. But we will monitor the stations, so the sanitation stations when people are leaving to go to the restrooms. We work through some of those details as well. And I think that Rashawn, I don't know if she's on or Larry, if you're on, but I know we've had many of those conversations and, you know, so I hope to answer some of it. We're absolutely considering that food part because we know we'll have a lot of folks there. But we're also thinking about how the cleanup looks, making sure we're socially distancing everyone as well as the safety and security parts.
So my, my question, Madam President, is since this is such an involved topic, could we possibly have a meeting or something for those who want to attend, even if, if it's, you know, it's open to the public who have questions? But to hammer out all these details tonight is going to be almost impossible.
It's not about hammering out the details so much, Scott, and I appreciate that. It's just when I'm getting phone calls and people want to know, they don't have the answer. So I'm, I am trying to at least get to our parents, some of these questions that they want to have answered, or at least, at least know that, at least know that they are being considered, so.
Oh, I totally agree, and that's why I would suggest that we open up a forum for them and members who want to talk about that discussion at length. Because I know that if I had a, a student that was graduating, it would be more important to me than it might be my neighbor down the road. No, they're, they're serious topics, but I think it would probably be suited better at a meeting solely devoted for that topic. With, as Dr. Davis was kind of hinting, bringing Larry on and talking about Adrian and talking about all these other people that were involved. They could all be there with their book of notes and ready to go, you know?
That's an excellent idea, Scott, an excellent idea. Because, you know, we're, one of the big questions that came up too was about the overflow and just having extra people there other than the two cars that are going to be allotted for each one of the families. And so the issue was a fear of having just too many people on the sidelines who are not, you know, well, just the overflow. So I, I think it's an excellent idea if we have time to, well, we should make time to do it, to have a forum so that if parents have questions, and maybe we'll have more answers to some of these questions by then.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I think what will also be great if we could just give parents an opportunity to submit those questions. Because, you know, I'd like to be able to get everybody prepared so that when those questions come, that they have not, we're working on it, but here's the answer to it.
Sure, and that's a good idea because you do need them, the questions ahead of time and be prepared to answer them instead of shooting from the hip.
I want to make a brief announcement before we move on. The Salvation Army here in Ferguson, located within the Ferguson Community Empowerment Center on West Florissant, I think the address is 9420 West Florissant, has received funds to help North County residents with utility bills. You can call 314-439-8306 to set up an intake appointment. The deadline is May 21st, and they are even offering a drive-through option, May 14th through the 21st from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m., but you will have to call in advance to set an appointment. I'll also get this information to Student Services with the hope that maybe it can be shared with the social workers so that families can also follow up in that way. Thank you. Oh, I do also want to note that they are only, they're doing gas or electric, so one utility bill, one or the other.
Thank you for that information. Um, speaking of graduation, the graduation is for and about our students and then their families being able to watch it because this is the biggest event of their 18 years. So we want to make sure that it is good for them. It doesn't necessarily have to be, one of our board members already isn't going to come because of health reasons. And I just want to say to everybody, you're all welcome to do what you want or how you feel comfortable, whether you want to come to the graduation or not. So no one will think any less of you if you don't come because, again, it's not about us being seen or us being at the graduation, because if you think back, who from your Board of Education was at your graduation? I've tried to think about that this week myself. So it, the important thing is that we're doing something for our students. They get to walk across the stage and for our families. So, Dr. Davis, you're going to set up, we'll talk about getting a forum.
Yes, ma'am. I'll, I'll, yes, ma'am, I'll work on that and then make sure we get, you know, proper notice so that anyone who wants to be a part of that can.
Okay, thank you. Do you or anyone else have anything else that you want to mention at this time?
No, ma'am, I think that's my report.
Okay. All right, everybody. Thank you very much. We will move to agenda item number seven, the consent agenda. And Madam Secretary, would you please read the disbursements? Donna?
Yes, I'm ready. Payroll, eight million, one hundred seventy-seven thousand, three hundred nine dollars and nine cents. Operational disbursements, two million, four hundred twenty-three thousand, nine hundred ten dollars and eighty-five cents with a total of ten million, six hundred and one thousand dollars, two, one thousand dollars, two hundred and, I'm sorry, ten million, six hundred and one thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-four cents.
Thank you. Could I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded, moved by Mr. Chabon, seconded by Dr. Thurman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Do we want to just do a roll call? Did we say last time because we're on Zoom? So let's do a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ebert?
Aye.
Mr. Chabon?
Aye.
Dr. Powell Walker?
Aye.
Dr. Thurman?
Aye.
Dr. Graves?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hogshead?
Aye. Agenda item number eight, end of year calendar information. Dr. Davis? Dr. Davis?
I'm sorry, I had my mute on. I was just talking away at this time. I apologize. Tiffany Biss, our Deputy Superintendent for Instructional Services, will present this item.
Good evening. K-5 teachers have extensive curriculum adoptions to be implemented in the fall of 2020. In order to meet the needs for our teachers to be ready for implementation, we are planning the following activities for the groups below. Our K-5 math curriculum is the heavy lift, May 22nd through May 28th, professional development for teachers and leaders with Eureka Math. Six through eighth grade social studies that also occur, May 22nd to May 28th for teachers and leaders with My World Social Studies curriculum. In doing so during the day, we would have our, on May 21st, the last day for new assignments would, to be assigned, would be implemented. On May 22nd to May 28th, we would, we would complete, students would be completing outstanding work for their core and making contact with their teachers as needed. Teacher expectations would be to participate in the professional development as assigned, May 22nd to 28th, and they would be checking in on students. This model is very similar to what would happen if we were to pull teachers for professional development during the school year, during the school day. Teachers would have time to check in with students during these days as well, based on the schedule. On the screen, what you're looking at is just a sample of the plan moving forward. As we presented the new curriculum adoption for Eureka Math and social studies at K-5, we just wanted to make sure that we were addressing the concerns of the heavy lift that is on elementary teachers with the new math program. So I just wanted to share a glimpse with you of what we have planned for our teachers. And so the 22nd through the 28th during the school day between eight and three, they would be in training with Lancherica and focus on literacy so they can have a successful launch during the school year. The following dates just give you a glimpse of what would be happening on that already district-approved professional development days that are part of the school calendar. And so they would continue working with experts from the company and our curriculum department to have good implementation and good support as they go throughout the school year with the math PD plan. And this item was just for information.
Okay, thank you.
I have a one, I have a question. The May 22nd through the 28th, is that, that going to be virtual or actually?
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Thurman, for asking for clarification. It is virtual. We are, we have set up virtual training with the curriculum company, and so they are able to meet our needs by providing us with 14 trainers to, so we can decrease the size of the training groups with staff to do virtual training via Zoom.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll move to agenda item number nine, AP Chemistry Textbook Purchase.
Good evening, Board of Education and Dr. Davis. AP Chemistry will be offered for the first time this next year. In order to choose a quality textbook, teachers had four textbook options, and they unanimously unanimously chose Chemistry AP Edition, 10th Edition, published by Cengage Learning. The textbook aligns with college boards' expectations, has online support for teachers and students, along with professional development, to ensure teachers are comfortable using the textbook and its resources. The decision was brought to CAC and Instructional Cabinet. The cost will not exceed thirteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty cents. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the purchase of the AP Chemistry textbook.
Thank you. Could I have a motion, please, to approve the chemistry textbook?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Chabon, seconded by Dr. Thurman. Could I have any other? I mean, Dr. Graves, what? I'm sorry, I heard your voice and said the wrong name. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Ebert?
Aye.
Mr. Chabon?
Aye.
Dr. Powell Walker?
Sorry, I was muted. Aye.
Dr. Thurman?
Aye.
Dr. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Hogshead?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Hadley, are you going to talk to us about the AP Biology textbook?
Yes. Again, similar to AP Chemistry, this will be offered for the first time next year. And the teachers had four textbooks to choose from, and they unanimously also chose Campbell Biology in Focus. It's a third edition, AP Edition, published by Pearson. The textbook also tightly aligns to the college board's expectations. It has a very good quality online support for teachers and students, along with professional development to ensure teachers are comfortable using the textbooks and its resources. The decision was brought to CAC and Instructional Cabinet, and the cost will not exceed fourteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty-one cents. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the purchase of the AP Biology textbook.
Could I have a motion, please, to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it was moved this time by Dr. Graves and seconded by Mr. Chabon. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Ebert?
Aye.
Mr. Chabon?
Aye.
Dr. Powell Walker?
Aye.
Dr. Thurman?
Aye.
Dr. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Hogshead?
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for all the work you did with both of these textbooks. The Student Expectations Code for the 2021 school year, we're having the first reading at this time.
Beals?
Mr. Beals?
Not sure where he is. I'll go ahead and present it. Per policy, the Student Expectation Code, SEC, is to be reviewed and updated annually as a means to ensure the district collects clean data while providing adequate support to students. The focus for the 2021 school year, the SEC Student Expectation Code revision is as follows. Consolidation of discipline codes, operationalizing definitions for infractions, and the inclusion of additional student supports. This is the first reading. It's for information.
Okay. Any questions from anybody? Hearing none, we will go to agenda item number 12, the boundary adjustments for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Good evening, Board of Education, Superintendent and Ms. Janice. With your permission, I'll talk to you about our boundary adjustments. And I want to start with giving credits to Dr. LaRue and Dr. Gibson and Mr. Prime for spending countless hours on preparation of this data that will be presented to you. To just give you a reminder, we talked about boundary adjustment in January, nearly six months ago. And tonight I will go and present to you what are the factors? What are we looking at and what are the impacts that will have in our enrollments for each school? So next, we are going to go and look at to give you a perspective about all the variables that potentially could impact our boundary adjustments. For example, jobs could cause families to move in and out, newborn babies, three, four years ago, impacting our enrollment. Families are moving in and out, prokial schools, and due to the new. Families are moving in and out, pre-kill schools, and due to the new situation we have with COVID nineteen and how families feel about it. In certain grade levels, families, they decide to bring their children to our schools or take them out, graduation rate, all these factors impact our projections for our enrollment. Next, we are going to go and focus on the piece that next, yes, the next screen will be looking at when I, tonight I talked to you about numbers, when I refer to old boundary, what I'm referring as to what is really two thousand nineteen, twenty, which is somewhat current boundary, because we are making a proposal for a change in our boundary. So old boundary or two thousand nineteen, twenty reference will be used for this school year. When I talk about new boundary, that's what we are proposing, which would be next year, twenty twenty-one. That being said, if we go and look at the schools that they are going to be impacted, which are Berkeley and Lee Hamilton, when we are looking at those two schools, the current boundary, as I'm just moving my mouse around it, the current boundary looks like this. What we are proposing to change it to something like that. Now, these changes obviously is going to go and make an impact. And the next screen, we are going to go and see an impact is going to have on specific grade levels. When you look at grades three, four, and five, currently, we have one hundred seventy-four third graders, one hundred fifteen, and fourth graders, one hundred eighty-six, fifth graders, which brings the total to five hundred nineteen for current Berkeley students enrolled. Based on the proposal that we are giving and changing the boundary lines, those numbers will change to four hundred thirty-three. The next slide, those numbers, because each school has certain amount of capacity, and those capacities will determine, based on the number of students that they're enrolled there, how congested it is. For example, based on the old boundary, which is our current enrollment, we have five hundred nineteen students enrolled. And if you look at the capacity of that building, puts it almost at ninety-nine percent capacity. The adjustment to new boundary will make the school capacity to eighty-two point six percent. That's what will happen to Berkeley. If you look at Lee Hamilton, Lee Hamilton, similar scenario, the current grade levels, the total number of students, currently they are at eighty-four point nine percent capacity. With the proposed changes, it'll go to sixty-eight point three percent capacity. The next slide, what we are going to look at is looking at Central and Walnut Grove boundaries. This is what what we already have in place. This is what we proposed to make it, make the changes. When we look at, again, the current enrollment, the changes based on the boundary lines, the number of students that they will follow, each one of those grade levels will create it, those percentages in terms of their capacity. The next slide will show us what will happen to Walnut Grove, which changes their capacity from seventy-eight point two percent to fifty-nine point four percent. I'm going to go a little bit more in detail about specifically Central and Walnut Grove on the next slide, which, again, this is our current, what we proposed was to have the boundary line changed like that. And unfortunately, at that time, nearly six months ago, there were a lot of variables, as I've mentioned at the very beginning of the presentation, we had to take into account all the changes that they're occurring. And unfortunately, these boundary lines that we proposed, even though adequate enough, but still makes the school central somewhat congested. The next slide will show that what we decided to not to change the boundaries in that fashion. And really, the new proposal is to make the boundaries for Central and Walnut Grove as follows, and you see on the screen. So what will, what will it do to us on the next slide? We'll see that because of that proposal, because of the changes in the enrollment and each one of the schools are projections, the school will not be at ninety-six point nine percent capacity and will bring it down to ninety point nine percent. And consequently, for Walnut Grove will bring it down to sixty-two point eight. So that ninety-six was too close of a mark to have that many students in that school. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. I may have gone a little too fast on this presentation, but I'll be more than happy to entertain any question you may have.
I don't know if it's for you, it's for Dr. Davis, but with the change in enrollment, will we also be in changing numbers of administrators with Lee Hamilton and Berkeley, especially since we have three administrators at three assistants at Berkeley and only, and none at Lee Hamilton? Are we making any changes teacher-wise also?
Yes, ma'am. So the answer to that is yes. We have taken a look at the enrollment at Walnut Grove and the enrollment that we had at Berkeley, and certainly addresses a lot of the, but to your question around the three administrators, we had a principal and two APs at both those schools. And so I'll be bringing some personnel to the board at a later meeting, you know, to specifically talk about what that shift looks like, so that we could, we'll have assistant principals spread it out a little bit more. We would likely only need to, one principal, one AP at Berkeley, one principal, one AP at Walnut Grove, because we're having some of these shifts. So the answer to that is is likely yes, but it certainly will be something I'll bring to the board for your actions at a later meeting.
Okay. Just wondering, seeing the numbers sit, wondering if we were change, making changes.
Yes, ma'am. And I would also add that, you know, we, you all have gotten a lot of calls over the last years, particularly from our Walnut Grove community and our Berkeley, Berkeley family as well, because of the numbers of students we've had at those schools, especially when it comes to traffic patterns in the mornings and afternoons. And so this addresses, won't necessarily get rid of the issue, but it'll definitely relieve some of those concerns that our community has brought to us and to you.
Great.
Okay. Dr. Davis, I had a couple of questions. One, I wondered when are, I know tonight we're having the conversation, but after all of this is finalized, when are families to be made aware of this? So that, so that they are aware that their child will be attending different school in the fall? And then also, have we, and again, I know it's early, looked at the impact on transportation for some families. So we know there are some families who currently have transportation, they're going to go to a new school and may no longer have access to transportation. And so I'm just wondering if that is something that has been looked at?
Yes, ma'am. I could absolutely address the first one probably more thoroughly than the second one. I'm not sure if Kevin Perunga, Laura Madristic is on the call, but with families, so when we brought this to the board and the board gave us the okay back in January to make these shifts, certainly, you know, we started that communications process, but hadn't gotten to families yet. It was really about the administrators. With COVID happening and some of those shifts have happened in our community in terms of numbers, those, those, those numbers have shifted, which is why we're bringing this back to the board now for information, because we wanted the board to be aware of some of those shifts in the boundaries. I think immediately, you know, we'll start letting families know, I'll be having a principal's meeting this coming Friday about a couple of things in terms of retrieval, but we'll also be talking with those four principals who will be affected by those schools. But especially those families who will, for example, leave Walnut Grove and go to Central, that will happen. And then families who are leaving Berkeley and going to Lee Hamilton, that will happen as well. So we, we, we want to get that communication out pretty quickly before the summer begins, so that families have an opportunity to look at all those details, what impact that has. Each school, one is about eighty-five or so students, and then the other one's about a hundred and two or three students and families. So Kevin Perunga has been a huge part of this whole process, our Director of Transportation. Be very, he's been very thoughtful about how this change will actually help us with some of the transportation outs and being able to get families in, especially at places like Walnut Grove, because we were so packed over there. Laura, do you want to speak to some of that as well? You're muted.
I was just going to just say exactly what you said. So Kevin Perung was part of all of the discussions and part of all of this planning, and so they did use his Versta Versa Trans software that we have, which is the routing system that we have. And so absolutely, if you're, there will be transportation provided for those families. Now, our boundary is a mile, you know, so if you live beyond the mile, you will be provided transportation.
What we will do also, Dr. Powell Walker, we'll specifically get with every family that's going to be affected, right? So those who will leave Walnut Grove and go to Central, will, everybody at the school won't need to get involved, but just the ones who will be affected by likewise at Berkeley. We also, every summer, print our bus routes. But by the time we do that, the families who will be affected by it will have had a conversation with us, Kevin Perung's office, and any concerns that have come up. We always listen to what our parents are saying, and if we can make adjustments, I mean, it's always about the safety of the student. We know that those boundary, boundary markers are there, and we follow those. Sometimes there are special circumstances that we look at as well, but we try to look at each case individually. But we'll be getting with those families pretty quickly in the next, you know, thirty days at, at, at a max, if not before then, so that we can make them aware of these shifts and preparation for potentially coming back in August, however that looks, because that's going to certainly be impacted by all of the restrictions that are out there.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that there is some, you know, all this thought is going into it, and I just wanted to make the request, if it's not already the plan, that some sort of language be put into the letter that goes to parents so that they know who to reach out to if they anticipate that this is going to be a hardship for their family, so that there can, so that they can receive that individual support that you just mentioned. And then the other thing I am also thinking about is just, you know, I'm thinking about the single parent who doesn't have those extra people in the house to help out with getting kids to all the places they have to get to in the morning, and the child who normally walks the other kid to the bus stop, all those little bitty scenarios that that families have had, have already worked out that fit with their work, like their work schedule and their school schedule, and there are going to have to be some adjustments. And so I would just ask if we could just try to be particularly sensitive about that.
Yes, ma'am. We'll make sure that they have a contact in terms of who to reach out to. And again, you know, you know, we can't always, you know, say yes to every request, but what we do is treat every request with the diligence it deserves and where we can help parents and their child, our child children, we absolutely will do that.
Thank you.
Got a quick question. Is it a little? I'm, I'm, I'm still think, I'm, I'm, I guess my mind is still on COVID. And with this change in the boundary, change in moving kids here and there, and us not knowing what the next school year is going to look like, before we make this other big change, do we want to start having those conversations on if we need to make smaller classrooms and things like that, what is it going to look like for us in the district? Before we vote on moving these people, sending the letter saying, okay, you're going to be moving to this school, and yet we don't know what the whole plan is going to look like?
Yeah, you know, I'm on several committees with superintendents around the region, and, you know, even tonight, I think it was Ms. Chestnut who asked some questions about, and the public comment that Ms. Hoxit was reading, you know, about what next year looks like, right? And so everybody, not just in Missouri, across this country, are thinking about reentry, and that's been a huge part of it. So we have, I already developed work groups within our district, and, you know, our team has been working diligently on areas from governance to academics to, you know, facilities, et cetera. So absolutely, there will likely be some shifts for next year, depending on where we are in state of affairs. We don't know what that is yet, but we're planning for it. I think when it comes to these boundaries, that we have to keep moving forward with the assumption that we will have business as usual, so that people at least know where their base schools are and what that process looks like. And then when those shifts come in, we can make adjustments accordingly. And so, you know, there may be hybrid model, you hear a lot of things about people talking about what's going to happen with school next year. A lot of it is driven by certainly the health experts as well as elected officials. So we have to keep, I think, moving forward with the boundaries, so people where their base schools are, and then with those adjustments with reentry, we can be able to adjust accordingly there.
I'd like to add on to what Dr. Powell Walker said, that we be especially sensitive to parents, you know, in light of, you know, not just the COVID, but just in terms of just making sure that our parents know, understand that when we have, when they have kids in multiple schools, that we are helping them by, first of all, that the time that the schools start, and then also when there are events. We really need to work on those schedules for events so that parents are not having to have holiday parties on the same day at two different schools, that kind of thing. So just a little bit to throw in, and I know that again, all of this is up in the air, but just to make sure that we are acknowledging the, the stress that parents may go through because of that.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. And, you know, just to that point, we have, and actually, we could send you the diagram where elementary schools have K two, have one night of the week, three, five, have a different night, you know, versus our secondary schools, they have certain nights of the week that they can have events, because we've had that issue come up, and I think some of you have brought that up before. If a, if a mom has, you know, children at three different schools, having the same night to go to two or three different events is impossible for her or him. So we try to address some of that. This year was better than a year before, as we went into restructuring, and we'll continue to refine that where we find their hiccups. You know, because mostly you have more night activities with our high schoolers than our middle, middle schoolers, especially if they're active in athletics and, and band and choir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Good, good conversation, everybody. Thank you. At this time, we'll go to agenda item number thirteen, sale and delivery of ten million dollars, go bond refunding.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight I'm here, and I, we have a couple of guests with us on our Zoom call. We have Lorenzo Boy, Ms. Stiefel, and we also have Jason Terry, who's our bond attorney with Gilmore and Bell. And so they're going to assist me through this, through this presentation. So we, next, you can go to the next slide, Kevin. So we have the opportunity to refund some bonds, and I'm going to give you a little bit of history about the bonds that we'd like to refund. We had a bond issue back in the year two thousand and ten, where we, where we were approved to sell twenty-five million dollars worth of bonds. And to bond, and of that twenty-five million dollars, there were two series. One was a two thousand and ten series that we issued that was ten million dollars, and one was a two thousand and twelve series that was fifteen million dollars. So those were both issued for the twenty-five billion dollars of bonds. Next slide. So the two thousand and ten series, bond series, is this, the bond series that we have the opportunity to refinance. We sold ten million dollars worth of Build America bonds that were sold back on October sixth of two thousand and ten. These are BABS, and they are taxable municipal bonds that in the two thousand and nine recession, they were part of the ARRA, and that was an opportunity to provide funding for different various projects that President Obama enacted. And so we actually sold some of these BABS. And we actually got some federal tax credits for these, so it did reduce the cost because of the tax credits. At the time that we sold the bonds, the interest rate on this series was four point nine nine percent, and the district receives about a thirty-five percent subsidy of interest that's paid on these bonds. Next slide. So we are able to refinance these bonds now, and it's been ten years. And so refinancing on a bond is very similar to refinancing of the house. So we always look at the interest rates and see if there's a savings that we can reap by refinancing. And so we are able to, at right this time, we've got some very low interest rates. Right now, they are at two point oh one percent, which we were able to negotiate. And that will give the district a savings of annually ninety, approximately ninety-nine thousand dollars for a total over the next ten years, savings of nine hundred ninety-three thousand, eight hundred twenty-four dollars. So that puts that money back into our debt service fund. We are able to do a private placement, which means that there's a bank called Zion Bank that would like to buy these bonds for us, and they are a reputable bank. We don't have them in our area. They're more out west, like in Utah and Idaho. Next slide. So what we're asking for the board, in order to proceed with this refunding or refinancing of these bonds, we need for the board to pass a resolution. So we are asking to, for the board to adopt a resolution, which authorizes and directs the issuance, sale, and delivery of ten million dollars principal of the general obligation refunding bonds, and that's through our Missouri Director Deposit Program. The series, it'll be series twenty twenty of the Ferguson, Florence, and School District R two, and details of said bonds, providing for the levy and collection of annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal and interest on said bonds as they become due, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith. I apologize, it's a very long resolution, but unfortunately, the bond attorney is the one that wrote that law, so you can yell at him. If you have any questions, we are happy to, we are here to answer any questions that you might have on this. If you have any questions, we are happy to, we are here to answer any questions that you might have on this refunding of the bonds.
I just, I'm sorry, Leslie, am I supposed to wait for?
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay. I just wonder if there is a way to sort of give the elementary school version of that for those who are not really well-versed in all of that? So if you could, I would appreciate that.
Lorenzo, you're pretty good at the elementary version.
You're muted.
Oh, sorry.
Laura, just a second, please. Laura, are you asking, because it doesn't say here, are you asking us to make a recommendation and vote to sell, to do this?
Yes, you guys need to pass this resolution, that big long resolution that I just read off.
It wasn't on my paper. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Before we get into questions and answers, could I please have a motion to authorize the refunding of the issuance of the bonds? Now I see it.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and now if you want to answer, Dr. Powell Walker, that would be great.
Yes, thanks for having me, everyone. My name is Lorenzo Boyd with Stiefel. As Laura Madrusik mentioned, the bonds were issued back in 2010 for ten million dollars. So this is, as you kind of mentioned before, this is similar to kind of what you would see if you were to purchase a home, and you purchased that home at an interest rate of five percent. And then, let's say, seven or eight years later, interest rates are lower than the five percent where you originally purchased the home, and you have a chance to refinance that home for a lower interest rate, let's say at three and a half percent. So you'll repay off that previous mortgage at five percent and reissue and get a new issue, a new mortgage for three and a half percent. And your payments would go, let's say, from a thousand dollars a month down to eight hundred and fifty dollars a month. This is the same instance, the school district issued those bonds. They had a roughly five percent interest rate back in 2010. Interest rates are considerably lower right now. So right now, we're refinancing those bonds originally that were five percent down to two percent, and the savings are almost a million dollars over the life of the issue. So saves about ninety-nine thousand a year in interest savings for the school district.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Ebert?
Aye.
Mr. Chabot?
Aye.
Dr. Powell Walker?
Aye.
Dr. Thurman?
Aye.
Dr. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Huxitt?
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you, you too. Thanks for always being there for us, Lorenzo. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Take care, everyone.
All right, buddy.
The last Agenda Item before adjournment is Agenda Item Number Fourteen, Appendix R Volt's Policies, Second Reading. So, Mr. LaRue, would you like to present?
At the January Board Retreat, Board and Administration worked on a revision to Appendix R, which are the Volt's Policies, Volt's. Thank you, Laura Madrusik, for hunting this all down. Volt stands for the Voluntary Organizational Leadership for Tomorrow's Schools. This was done back in nineteen ninety-eight. The change that is currently considered is BP dash one under Board Process and Board Beliefs. The changes that are recommended reflects the district's equity resolution that was previously adopted by the Board. During the first reading of the recommended policy change, a request was made to change the name of the policy. Recommended change is Board Communication and Relationship Guidelines. The recommendation is for the Board to approve these recommended changes under Appendix R as Board Communications and Relationship Guidelines.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Board Communications and Relationship Guidelines that we all created together?
I so move.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and do we have any discussion or thoughts? Hearing none. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Ebert? Mr. Chabot?
Aye.
Dr. Powell Walker?
Aye.
Dr. Thurman?
Aye.
Dr. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Huxitt?
Aye. The motion carries. Without anything further, unless somebody wants to say something on the agenda?
Do you want me to sing?
Pardon me?
You want me to sing?
Please.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate you.
With no further business, I would like to adjourn the meeting, and thank you all. See you at graduation.
Awesome.
All right. Good night.